This is the meeting of the Eastham School Committee on Tuesday, October fourteenth. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www dot eastham dash ma dot gov. And myself, Monica and Lindsay are present, so we have a forum again. There are no agenda changes for today. Uh, the next is public comment. Members of the public may address the committee on matters not on the meeting's agenda for a maximum three to five minutes. At the chair's discretion, under the open meeting law, the committee is unable to reply, but may add items presented into a future chat. There is nobody here in the room. Is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, uh, moving on to priority business. I'll turn it over to the chief superintendent for a safety update.
Okay, um, getting here one thanks so much. Good to see folks here and online. Uh, we thought as we get this year underway that um, not just here at Eastham, but in all of our uh, all of our school communities, it'd be good to pause and just talk briefly about um, school safety and security, something that uh, I know is at the forefront of everyone's mind and uh, and I think it's just a good opportunity to um, possibly bring some attention to some of the the ongoing efforts that I've learned about in my short time here in NOSIT that um, our school communities are committed to and uh, and thank you to the chief for also being here uh, in attendance. There's a a brief slide deck that um, I thought I would just go through briefly that it it is in for a packet. Um, and uh, this is uh, uh, this is what has been, I've been sharing with our other school committees over the last couple of weeks and will continue uh, as we move through the month of uh, October. Uh, next slide please. Uh, I think that um, I think first and foremost, uh, one of the things that I have greatly appreciated, a short time being here and which I'm so thrilled to be able to share is the close partnership that is clearly in place between the school district um, and our uh, local law enforcement and emergency personnel services. Uh, and I've had the chance to uh, coming on board in June to uh, with uh, my predecessor to meet with the police chiefs at uh, just before they uh, into school. And we just met again, uh, I guess it was two weeks ago or so. Uh, and uh, coming to this work, I know that that's invaluable, that those partnerships that clearly are alive and very well here uh, in in NOSIT is is a great thing to lean into. Um, not just as myself, the superintendent, but I I I know for our school leaders and for our staff throughout. Uh, tonight the effort is just to provide you with a brief update on some of the work that um, has been ongoing here in NOSIT that I think uh, just want to bring attention to. Uh, next slide please. Um, I I think uh, first, first just to bring attention to the fact um, is that from my perspective, and this held true both as a school leader and certainly as a district leader and superintendent, this is a topic that you never ever reach the end of. It's it's unlike other things where you might have an implementation plan and when you get to the end, you can say, check, we've accomplished. Uh, I I think that this topic, safety, certain the security, emergency preparedness, has to be one that's ongoing. Uh, and there has to be a constant focus and attention to to the importance of the work. And so the planning for safety and security is something that I think first off, just to underscore, um, has to be continuous and will be certainly uh, uh, under my uh, under my charge. Uh, I think that um, it's also important to point out that, and I know that some may um, may may have a a sense of this, that perhaps like many other things, the Department of Education uh, may have a standard set of protocols or expectations for school safety and security in the Commonwealth. Uh, unfortunately, that's not the case. And while there are some recommendations of best practices, there's not one template. There's not one um, recipe, if you will, for what school safety should look like in the NOSIT public schools as compared to the model of public schools. Um, context matters, each school is different, uh, each different uh, district is of course different and so uh, they really do leave it to the local level to develop um, plans for uh, for the broad topics that fall under emergency safety and security. Next slide please. I mentioned briefly the partnership and there is no question that our school and district leaders, our staff um, can't do this work well without obviously the expertise, the contributions um, and and the insight from uh, from our safety and security personnel partners. Uh, and in the short time, as I mentioned, it's just, it's fantastic and highly evident that we we enjoy and will continue to a strong working relationship with um, these folks throughout the NOSIT public schools. Next slide please. Um, the uh, I I think it's important to bring attention to the fact that um, one of the most recent efforts district wide was um, or is rather Emergency Response Guide, that if you visit our school classrooms, our schools, really all um, all areas of our of our seven schools, uh, it's a it's a very bright yellow, hard to miss response guide that uh, was put together uh, uh, here in the district and and really can serve as a uh, as a good roadmap for uh, for staff that's here. Um, it's also important to point out that as I understand it, last year, almost a year ago, there was a tabletop exercise that um, took place uh, at the Orleans Police Station. For those that may not be aware of that term tabletop, it's it's really a simulated exercise, if you will, where literally around a table, uh, key stakeholders will gather and there'll be a scenario that will be put forth on the table and then collectively everyone goes through their response guides around how they would manage and how they can support that um, particular uh, that particular situation. So that's great to hear for me as the as new superintendent here, I think that I've been involved in that um, tabletop exercise type of work before, and I think it's invaluable and something that I look forward to continuing as we move ahead uh, over the course of the uh, coming years. Next uh, slide please. In terms of our emergency response here in NOSIT Public Schools, or NPS, um, I think first to to highlight the fact is I've come to learn that district has um, has utilized the Alice program. Uh, not surprising to me, this is a program that you could find um, uh, implemented across many school districts throughout the Commonwealth. It is um, it is not the only program out there, but it's certainly a prominent one uh, and one that um, I know a lot of, as mentioned, a lot of districts use. And that really is a is a framework, if you will, around how to respond to um, uh, security issues, uh, safety issues that might unfold uh, in 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 school building. Um, it's um, uh, that also protocol involves both staff as well as students. Uh, and it also involves drills and those drills, uh, I know have started and will continue throughout uh, our schools uh, in the in the coming weeks and months. Um, it's also important to point out that there are, this is one facet of the law that does uh, is very clear for schools and that is the number of fire drills that each school is supposed to have. It's actually four over the course of the school year with one supposed to be delivered, uh, or executed rather on the first couple of days of school. Uh, and that of course will apply with and swell under the way. Next slide please. Um, in terms of student and staff training, obviously there's a lot to go into this. Um, Alice was, as was mentioned, and and drills in education too, bus evacuation drills are just some of the many. But I know that part of this, of course, is also discussions with school uh, leaders, uh, school leadership teams around particular readiness factors and the training within their own school sites uh, to be prepared in the event of an emergency, whatever that might be. Next slide. School safety, um, any discussion of that, I think really um, starts with the access to a school facility. One of the things that I've been really uh, uh, pleased to see and um, knows in place is really the attention that we give to ensuring that uh, all of our exterior doors remain locked while school is in session and that students are in the building. Maybe very different on a weekend or in the evening when school is not in session. Um, but certainly while school is in session. And the other thing that I think is important to point out is uh, the reliance that we have across our schools and the exact number of monitors may look different from building to building. But what's been really impressive is the attention that's been paid to having in place a number of monitors that can help um, our school staff see who's around the building, both inside and and outside. Uh, I mentioned that doors locked at all times and we have the buzz in system as I know committee members would be aware, if you've ever tried to visit a school while uh, while school's in session. Next slide please. Uh, priorities for the year ahead, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, I mentioned at the outset, the meetings that um, I'm so pleased to be a part of and welcome the partnership with our weekend with our uh, our police chiefs and lieutenants, something that um, will continue. But I should point out the uh, involvement as well, Truro and Providence Town. Um, they've uh, they're they are most welcome at um, our discussion tables and pleased to see them as well too. One of the things that I shared with the chiefs at our last meeting, um, and which was certainly some I support for is the uh, the thought to conduct physical assessments of our school facilities. There are there are third party organizations that can do this work uh, with experts in their respective fields. They can help lend an objective eye to what our current procedures are. Uh, that's something that I've experienced before in in previous districts and something that I very much would like to explore, uh, being able to bring here to to NOSIT. Um, just as an opportunity to review what we've got in place, uh, and any possible gaps or or opportunities for improvement. One of the, sorry.
And that's specific to safety?
Uh, it's security, yeah, yeah. Uh, reunification planning for all seven communities. My sense of this is that this is a discussion that has begun, but I think has some uh, importance to 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 return to. And just to clarify, reunification, when we think about that, and what I'm sharing here is that idea uh, that can be far ranging, uh, but anytime that you need to evacuate a school facility and create a circumstance in which a student or child is reunified with his or her parents or guardians. That can be um, for a boiler that fails in the middle of January. At ten o'clock in the morning and the temperatures are going to drop quickly, we need to figure out a plan. That could be for a small fire that creates, you know, smoke in a building. The building's not in 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 peril or jeopardy, but it's not safe to continue to occupy um, something that I've experienced before. And of course, it can be something far more um, uh, horrific to think. But the idea of reunification, reunifying families uh, is a is a process. Uh, I've experienced that and I know that there are training programs out there to help uh, our school personnel think strategically about how to go about doing that in the event that that ever would need to happen. That seems to be something that um, work is started with, but an opportunity to continue with. And really the, you know, making sure that we from a a district wide standpoint, fully recognize that not one of our schools is the same as another. We also have this uh, of course, our reality of spanning four different police departments and they may have some slightly different expectations, but I think broadly speaking, the intent here, and I and I think I can safely speak for our police chiefs, is to recognize that what we want is something that's consistent for our students and for our staff. Making sure that we have similar language and similar expectations. I I I think as we all recognize that even a child who's sitting in a third grade grad classroom in Eastham uh, elementary school today will eventually make their way to the middle school and then to the high school. And we want to make sure that um, our our students have the same general wherewithal of how to respond in the event of an emergency, the same kind of language and wording that's used. That's really important. And I think that that's uh, that's something we certainly want to work towards um, uh, as as we move ahead. So I'm happy to take any questions on that, but I I again, I I think um, our our chief are willing to to join us here tonight. All of our chiefs have been great and have, I guess I mentioned, uh, they also have been joining these meetings and certainly, I'm sure maybe you have things to add.
Sure, yeah, um, sorry. I actually don't have a lot to add. That was a great presentation and um, actually Dr. Brand and I were talking about this the other day, that over my career of twenty-five years or so, a lot has changed, but recently um, we've kind of walked in on a consistent path as far as school security and police training for school emergencies, which has been kind of nice because we haven't had to constantly learn new trainings and and new methods. So um, just a little bit here specific to Eastham, uh, we still have Officer Carrie D'Angelo assigned as our school uh, she's not a school resource officer per se, but a school liaison to the Eastham Elementary School. Um, she's available to Mr. Crosby by phone. She stops into the school, walks through the building um, on a regular basis. Uh, Lieutenant Schnitzer on our department has training in school security and school response and he is first supervisor. So they kind of work together to make sure that we're doing our part, the drilling. Um, we do do uh, regular walkthroughs of the building, all the officers on day shift. Um, each each officer on each shift should be taking a turn walking through the building during the day as their call volume allows that, obviously. Um, we also do um, the the training for us is kind of two-pronged here. We take part in the training for the school staff and the students, but then we also do our own training on responding to any emergencies that that arise at the school. Um, in twenty-twenty-four during the summer, I think I reported at this meeting last year, we did some onsite training inside the elementary school, which is great. Um, the the response to any of these buildings is really the same, but it's nice to put our officers onsite so they can see the inside of the building, become more familiar with it, if it should have to respond there. This year we did training at the high school because obviously the high school's changed a lot. Um, we may go back there next summer, just it's going to be continuing to change, but eventually we'll circle back and do more training directly inside the elementary school. Um, just to touch on Alice real quick, um, the gist of Alice is that we're trying to teach our our teachers um, specifically that um, in any emergency that arises, we want to empower them to trust them to make the best decisions that they feel is appropriate for that situation. Um, as you might imagine in these these trainings and drills, there's a lot of what-if questions and it's hard to answer every single what-if question and that's kind of why we're just trying to get the message across that you know your school better than us, you know your students better than us, and you're in the situation, we trust you and want you to make decisions that you think are the best. Support that. Um, I agree with uh, Dr. Brand. He actually stole my thunder a little bit on this. This stuff, this training and the studying of this is never over. Um, we can always do more, we're working to do more. Um, you know, we could run a huge tabletop exercise on reunification and there's something else we could do coming up in the following months of the year. So uh, we're committed, same as um, Dr. Brand and the school district to being a part of that going forward. And I just want to also thank Dr. Brand, Mr. Crosby, and all the staff at the elementary school. Um, the what-if questions are uh, difficult to answer, but they're great to hear because it means the teachers and staff are thinking through the what-ifs. And that's really what we're trying to do, is just get them to think in in different situations, you know, what would I do, what could I do? Um, and it's some of the best at the Eastham Elementary School. Teachers are very engaged and and very dedicated to it. So uh, we should, the town should be proud of that.
Other questions?
Sure.
What about the parents? We also need some sort of, not training, but at least um, some sort of knowing of what if something happens, how we're going to deal with the news or what are we supposed to do? We're glad that we live here, but still, if something ever happens, I think we also need to be educated.
Okay, I agree. And actually, this topic just came up at our chief's meeting with Dr. Brand a couple of weeks ago and we came up with some different suggestions about how to convey that information, possibly at like an open house each year, we can set up a table or we can give a quick presentation. So that is being discussed and I agree with you. Um, there's some things, you know, the nuts and bolts of our security response that we can't share publicly, but there's certainly information that we could give that would um, A, set your mind at ease that we are doing the training and the preparation and and B, you know, what what it would look like. So that is being discussed.
How frequent are the meetings with the with the staff and the teachers with your so the police and that like that, those what-ifs you're talking about?
Generally during the trips that we do each year, which is three to four drills a year, I think we try to get four in. Um, and we also have gone into staff meetings to meet with the teachers privately. Uh, those aren't necessarily the regularly scheduled things, but we have done it and um, that offers a different dynamic with those students there where they feel more comfortable maybe to ask different questions. So
So like at least annually, they have some ability to, without the children around, talk to you and ask this question?
Yes.
Um, opening day, the first couple of days that we had uh, staff and both uh, Officer Schnitzer and uh, Officer D'Angelo came and addressed the staff and they do that annually every year. Um, and then we've been doing over the years as well as that uh, Officer D'Angelo will go into individual classrooms and actually, you know, have um, just little lessons, thirty minutes or so with the students and the staff are in the room as well. And talking about scenarios and different things, uh, that will be scheduling that. We've been doing that for for years.
The the Alice training specifically obviously is different quite a bit from, you know, kindergartners to seniors and high and even just within the elementary school, kindergartners to fifth graders, there's a there's a big difference there, different dynamics in those classrooms. So we want to try to break it down into those groups if we can to to touch on any concerns that might come up with that age group.
Okay, thank you. Um, another topic that I know has come up amongst parents and no need to give a full answer tonight, but I just would like us to have a discussion is uh, we, there's a full-time officer at the high school and the middle school and there's not one at the elementary schools in the district. And just the the considerations of that, the the thinking behind that, the, you know, how do we continue that dialogue to to discuss, like maybe we should be thinking about that and then obviously that's having to work with the town to make that happen, but I would just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Sure, yeah, this topic has come up quite a bit lately. Actually, I think we did discuss this as well at our last chief's meeting with Dr. Brand. Um, obviously a different situation in elementary school from a high school, the school resource officer at the high school is there um, five days a week with the staff, with the students when the school's open. Um, there's a bit more going on there for the officer to do all day with the older demographic of of student. Um, obviously having an officer at an elementary school, the number one pro, if you will, for that is just the visibility and security of it, having a police car in the parking lot, having a uniformed police officer on site. Um, I think we'd have to work through what that officer would do all day long. Um, I I don't, you know, I think it may have to be some kind of a combination of maybe they're doing other related police work, but their presence at the school is the most important thing and they're available at the school when anything come up. Um, and I, you know, speaking just for Eastham, we don't have a spare officer to do that with. That would have to be a newly funded position in order to do that. I'm not necessarily against it. I just think there's um, there's some research and some some preparation and planning to do on that topic before we were, we'll turn around that.
Or what if it was something where there was somebody there at the beginning of this, you know, in kind of when the school is more open at
Drop off, pick up.
Dismissal and things like that. I mean, again, I'm not an expert on when there's the biggest um, ability to get to the school.
I agree, those are times where it would be nice to have somebody there. Um, we can try to do that more regularly. The the problem is for us is we have officers scheduled during the day to handle whatever calls come in in the town.
Yeah.
And not necessarily someone specifically scheduled for that task at the school at any given time, whether it's midday or early in the morning, late afternoon. So it's not something I could promise every single day.
Right.
Um, we do, we have anywhere from two to four officers working the day shift every day and we ask each of them to go to the school at separate times, walk through, be a presence. So there are time, there are many times during the day where there is a police car in the parking lot and there is an officer on site. Um, but obviously in the business we're in, everything's unpredictable. We don't know what's going to be happening on any any given day. So um, it's all interesting topic, the school resource officer topic is um, is intriguing in elementary schools. I know there's actually legislation right now um, that would require it if towns didn't opt out. Uh, I'm not sure how much funding that comes with um, from the state level, which is always the the question. Um, but it's something definitely we should follow going forward and and keep abreast of.
Is it required at the middle school and high school?
It's not required anywhere.
Yeah.
It's just um, years ago, it was, it was uh, passed and the the district pays for part of it.
Right.
As well.
Okay. Great. Um, yeah. Both of you have, so Carly, you you did miss the public comment, but it's because you have the wrong group. So you can comment speak, but you have to do it in front of the mic. And Mary too, because Amanda. So just make sure you put your mic on and speak into it because our secretary is uh, virtual.
I I have a question, Adam. Um, have you received any hoax calls over the last couple of years? And I'm Mary Shaw, eight fifty Schoolhouse Road. Um, have you received any hoax calls over the last couple of years? And if you did, what would the protocol be?
I'm not going to discuss the protocol in an open meeting, obviously, but um, I, off the top of my head, I don't believe there's been any hoax calls involving schools over the last couple of years. Um, other issues maybe, but not involving schools. Um, but I don't want to discuss the security protocol.
You have a protocol?
Yes.
Hello.
Let's make sure you talk intimately, right?
All right. Yeah. Um, I'm Carly Souza. Um, I'm a mom of two boys at Eastham Elementary and a part-time uh, parent educator at Eastham Elementary as well. Um, so I'm in the in the building um, often and what you just started to kind of bring up was one of the reasons why I wanted to attend tonight's meeting. Um, and some of my questions were answered with what you just touched on, but how long of a process would that take to be able to have an officer in the building um, during school hours, the whole school week?
That's a hard question to specifically answer. Um, it would need to be a newly funded position for us so that so that the funding would have to be approved and then we'd have to go through the hiring process to hire an officer, get them fully trained, which involves um, the police academy training, but also specific school resource officer training. Um, so that could take a year or more, or it could be quicker if we found someone that was previously trained. There's a lot of variables there.
Okay. Um, all right, yes, no, I just um,
I would talk about it, like your, give your comments or perspective on it.
Yeah, um, uh, I don't know, it's very uh, you know, obviously emotional, um, you know, but um, I understand the process of it. I think the part that um, is hard to hear is the financial piece because it feels like the safety of the children and, you know, hopefully our wonderful little community will remain safe and wonderful, but it's just so frightening to think of just all the horrific things that take place. And I'm sure some of those people might have thought, oh, we live in a safe place and this will never take place here and I hope that is the case, but I think it would bring a lot of comfort. Um, and also God forbid, something like that did take place. I know the school is close to the police station, but to just think if somebody was in the building and, you know, had the gear and things that they had that that could prevent any harm or uh, God forbid, keep it minimal. Um, but um, yeah, it's just, it's it's uh, heart-wrenching to have these um, drills and I, you know, having um, a six-year-old, a nine-year-old, it's very different. Um, my nine-year-old's very used to it. Six-year-old has a lot of questions. Um, so I don't know, if um, I'm happy to help and do whatever I can to get that ball rolling and whatever I can do. Um, or as a community, I feel if there were a vote or signatures or whatever, I feel very confident that a lot of the school community, both families and employees would feel uh, a lot of comfort and uh, wanting something like that. And it's unfortunate, it does take a long process, but um, I also understand that things can't happen overnight, but um, it would be wonderful if that's something that could take place and happen soon.
No, I, yeah, I appreciate your comments. Uh, and I appreciate the emotion in it too because um, uh, my kids went to Eastham Elementary School, my youngest just graduated NOSIT High School last year, my wife's an English teacher at NOSIT High School. So I think about this every day. Um, and I, it's, having a school resource officer in every school, I think is something we should discuss. Um, I can't sit here tonight, promise you that it's going to happen, but it's definitely something we should discuss and having people like you weigh in on it is invaluable. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I thank for your comments and both for being here. I I think the uh, I think two things, um, not so much specific to the school resource officer piece, and I I know that this is a topic that's, I'm sure coming up many places, not just here in NOSIT, not just here in the Cape. Um, uh, you know, beyond the the school resource officer piece, and it's interesting to me, coming from over the bridge, coming from a different town, I've heard this comment a few times, you know, that hopefully this this doesn't, our small idyllic communities here on the Cape, this this kind of thing will never occur. Uh, we can sort of rest, you know, that that's striking me is really interesting to hear because um, obviously, while I'm quite new to this community and to the uh, I just want you to know and our staff and our, you know, I'm not coming here with that as a forethought. In in fact, to me, this would hold true wherever, whether it was in greater Boston, downtown Boston, or in the Cape, you know, these things, if we know one sad reality and we don't have to take a long look to see some of the tragedies that have happened in school camps throughout the country. Uh, they've not all been in urban centers. Uh, you know, and and so as hard it is, it is as it is to think about, to me, this work still is about doing all we can. As small as our school communities might be, um, and as safe as people may feel, to plan for the unthinkable. Um, and so the the on-school resource officers, the work around preparing our staff, the trainings, our protocols, making sure that there's a clear understanding for that new staff member that starts their first year this year compared to the veteran, that everyone has a common understanding about how we would respond in the unthinkable circumstances. To me, that will remain important. That everyone has a common understanding about how we would respond in the unthinkable circumstances. To me, that will remain important. And competent with our partnerships, our, our school communities will remain safe, but we still need to plan for as if. Yeah, thinkable could still happen. How we.
Thank you, Dr. Brand, and thank you too. Okay, moving on to item B, the um. Religious exemptions curriculum opt-out. Which um, do you want me to? Edit what I'm hearing in it or? Um.
But this is here.
Oh, okay, great. So it's, it's in our packet. Um, come on, can Lindsay hopefully have a chance to read it, but basically as Dr. Brand explained to me, this would have been included in the, the. The um, normal manual that we vote on, the handbook that we vote on, but um, it just. Got included afterwards, so that's what I think is additional.
Sure. I can offer some.
Yeah.
Information if that would be helpful. Um, so, yeah, so, e- exactly, so um. This update that is mentioned in memo is um, the current Massachusetts regulation and recent court guidance about the rights of parents and guardians to offer child that have curriculum materials that um, conflict with sincerely held religious beliefs. And where this is stemming from is a um, a Supreme Court decision called um, Mahmood versus Taylor. That um, passed on June twenty-seventh this past summer. So this is why the request is coming through now and we weren't able to add it um, beforehand. And it basically gives parents and guardians two main rights. Um, the right to review curriculum and materials to see if anything conflicts with their religious beliefs. And their right to opt their children out of specific lessons or materials that they find religiously objectable um, without penalty to the student. So that's what the court ruling says. Um, the, our Department of Education um, is uh, requiring that all schools um, add language to their um. Um, handbooks that reflect this new policy. Um, I'm just, I'll just read it really quickly. The language that um, we proposed that has been um, added, invented by our, our legal team, basically says that. Consistent with Massachusetts regulation as stated, the Nauset Public Schools through its curricula and materials. Encourages respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals, regardless of race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. In accordance with district guidelines, families may request information from the building principal on available accommodations related to curriculum content. So the addition of this language kind of covers the um. Uh, the Supreme Court issued decision. Um, I do want to just add that Massachusetts regulations already require that all public school curricula promote respect for the human rights of all individuals. Um, regardless of the factors listed. And that we already have existing law around opting out of sex education, and that's not going to be affected. That seems completely the same. One distinction too, is that unlike this um, law around sex education, this is not a law, it is just guidance. So um. When um, uh, some of the um, the leadership team and I met when this regulation kind of came out and um. We wanted to help kind of streamline this process a little bit for our district, so. Um, I'll serve as the opt-out coordinator for the district. So basically, my role would be to help families um, to understand the process. Support staff in implementing it consistently and that ensure the students receive um. Appropriate alternative learning opportunities when needed. Um. So what we're basically asking is that um. You uh, vote on this to prove the language to be added to um, the, the handbook. That aligns with our state regulations, federal board guidance. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Lindsay, you have a que, any questions?
Um, I have a question. So if a fam, if, you know, a family decides they want their student to opt out, what happens next? Are they provided with alternate curriculum or what's the process?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, the family would let their teacher know, who would let um, the building principal know, um, and they would contact my office. Um, the next step would be for the family to meet with myself and the building principal um, to kind of discuss um, the. Uh, exactly what particular um, lessons they're looking to opt out of, so we can uh, better understand and support the family. Um, after that, we'll, we'll um, uh, talk, include the teacher as appropriate. And um, to ensure that there is an alternative space provided for the student if needed. And that the alternative curriculum or, or lesson is also appropriate. Um. Uh, for what the student will be doing, doing, during the, the lessons. That they're being opt out of.
Thanks.
Sure.
Um, and also I should say that um, this is very new, of course, um. But um, it really is our goal to ensure that um. That we, of course, like, respect the parents' rights, but also to ensure that this is manageable for our teachers to be able to provide the uh. Uh, the lessons at hand. So we'll be working very closely together um, as these. If, if we, if we, we, we um, receive any requests.
Yeah, I guess that was, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know examples of when this has happened, uh, but that was gonna be kind of a next question of like. Is there something that might become unmanageable to teachers? Like, is a request reviewed? Or is it just sort of taken on faith that, you know, whatever objection is made, you know, alternate curriculum will be provided?
That's a great question. So there is a form that the parents will be asked to um, fill out to complete. So and they, it is up to the families to identify like a specific lesson they. Uh, it does limit the families that can't opt out of like an entire unit or, you know what I mean, like it, it, it really is quite specific. And just to give you like comparison, like I said, this is new for us too, but in terms of how many families are opting out of the sex education is very litigious. And um, just given what um, just the um. Like, I, I, I don't expect there to be any different call than what we, we can get for that particular. Instances too.
Thanks.
Hmm.
So may I have a? Someone make a motion to accept the religious exemption curriculum opt-out language as grounded in the packet?
Well, let me make a motion to go ahead and uh, have the families opt out for this religion exception.
Need a second. There's only the three of us.
Oh, a second, sorry.
All in favor?
Alright.
Fastest please, yeah. Uh. The next is the chair report. Um. The only thing I have to say is um. That Mr. Crosby announced, formally announced his, that this will be his last year, so. Very happy for you. Sad to see you go.
I appreciate that. Thanks very much.
And.
Blessing to be a part of this uh, school community for um, this will be my eleventh year, so. Wonderful, but uh, looking forward to new chapters, you know. Um, but. Wasn't really prepared to say anything, maybe in some way that.
Yeah, oh no, you don't have to give anything. But now you can move on, then we can.
No, I appreciate it. Yes. Um. So you have my report, which I provided, right? Everybody stopped that. Instead of, I'm not gonna go through the whole page. Uh, just a couple of highlights that I wanted to share. Um. Is uh, oh, we received this uh, recognition from the state and. Um, said in recognition of the hard work of your educators, staff, students, and families that have raised uh, your MCAS twenty twenty-five achievement. To pre-pandemic levels or higher in grades three through eight. So. Congratulations to all the students, the families, and. Uh, all of the staff, because it's definitely a, a K to five effort. And so. You know, that's, it's kind of nice to get a, you know, a recognition from the state. Um, and then uh, just our admin assistant, Laura Anville, has left um, to pursue another job. Um, you know, we wish her all the best. Um, and appreciate her time and service here at EBS, and we're in the process of, of uh, hiring another. Person and um, as soon as they're onboarded, I'll be sure to uh. Introduce her and welcome her to the Eastham uh, community. Just a couple of things to share as it's kind of looking ahead. We've got uh, parent teacher conferences or teacher family conferences Thursday and Friday next week. October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Um, the parents group is hosting a annual Halloween dance on Friday, the twenty-fourth. Um, we've got our next all-school meeting, morning meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-ninth. And uh, looking ahead, um, I'm hoping to do the Veterans Day remembrance and flag planting on Friday, November seventh, but that's to. To be confirmed. And then um. Our first uh, student council meeting will be Thursday, November twenty. Hopefully full. Budget process at that time too. So is there anything on my report maybe that you've read through or anything this evening that you have a question about? I'm happy to.
I just. I just had a question about the dance. Um, I was under the impression that the fourth and fifth graders were invited to the Wellfleet Dance. So is the Eastham Dance gonna be K through three or is it gonna be the whole school?
The whole school.
Oh, okay.
The whole school.
Okay, that just. I, I had, I think it's been a tradition for a few years for the fourth and fifth graders to be invited to Wellfleet's Dance, and it's the same night.
When, when Adam O'Shea's uh, started there, which is, um, he just started to invite before the fifth. And he just realized that um, he was double booked, you know, for that night. So. I did reach out to um, Molly, I believe, about. You know, since you're in K three, you know, four, five up there.
Oh, okay.
I had reached out, yeah. So I, I don't know what, I didn't hear back from anybody, so. You know, maybe it would be four, five still up in Wellfleet and then K three just in Eastham.
I just have a good class parent that is also doing Halloween dance.
Oh, okay.
I was about to go to BJ's and I just.
Well, we'll figure it out. He just realized that he was, he was double booked. And um, I think in order for his to be successful, he would. Use, need our. To go up there, so maybe we can work something out. So that's, that's all I have. Any other questions or? For me tonight? Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, in your uh, in your package, uh, the report, my report uh, for October. Just uh, some highlights captured in there. First off, the efficiency and visualization study um, is uh, is noted first. Uh, as a friendly reminder, this is a study that all four towns and respectfully all courseful committees and that. Uh, the other uh, elected bodies have uh, all joined in and signed on to, including Eastham. Uh, the study is well underway, started in the summer. Um, the end goal is to have um, towards the end of this school year. Late May, June, some recommendations coming forth, not a single recommendation, but recommendations coming forth for the school communities to consider, the towns to consider. Um, as, as they look ahead for the longer term operations of our school system. Uh, what is coming up though, uh, in the very near future are a number of public meetings that are the consultants for this study, I have invited. Um, any interested member of any of the communities to join. Uh, the dates you can see listed there, all of these meetings um, start at six o'clock with a target of seven thirty is the end time. Um, I, I will point out, you'll see that these are scheduled in, in most of our schools, but they're not at all meant to be only for. Uh, said the parent guardian to have a child in that particular school. So for example. Uh, the Eastham uh, date you can see is November the fifth. Um, it's also the same night as New Orleans Elementary, but. If you are a parent or guardian with a child in Eastham Elementary, you certainly can attend that meeting, but let's say you're unable to on that night. There's no reason that you can't jump over to Wellfleet on uh, November the third or Brewster on November the sixth. So. These are open to any and all interested um, community members, and I want to make sure uh, that you are aware of those dates. This was also pushed out from my office to the community um, earlier today, so. Uh, the business office software, something that uh, we've touched upon. Uh, this was an endeavor that started last year uh, with the business office and the super, uh, my predecessor. It was um, delayed a little bit somewhat in the pursuit of this because of some changeover within the business office, but. Just to bring to the intention of the committee that we're, we're ongoing and our commitment, it's gonna take us a little time to get there, but still some openings within that department, but. Um, this new software package uh, will really enhance the reportability of the financial affairs of the district, which. Know that there's a desperate interest in um, across the school system. So um, that's ongoing. Um, it's a, it's a very big lift for those in the central office who are involved with this. By, by lift, I mean. A large number of training days. Full days, like many, uh, for all uh, that are involved with this, but we're, we're committed to doing this. You know, this is important and uh, I'll keep you uh, updated with this, we'll be able to deal with that. Um, this is an event that just took place, uh, third item, and that's the Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Students Councils. Uh, I just thought a good shout out as I try and make sure that uh, in this case, Eastham Elementary is well aware of some things that are happening in other parts of our school system. Uh, yours truly had the good fortune to say a few words at this amazing event that was our new Nauset auditorium in the, in the high school. Uh, that's not a misprint. There were almost six hundred uh, students from across the southeastern part of the state. Uh, this is a very big deal for those students that are involved in this. Uh, and boy, did Nauset um, serve us proud and represent not just the new facility, but the energy. And the passion amongst our particular student leaders that were there. The attorney general was there, uh, which was, was great. Uh. Principal Clark said a few words, just a real energetic day. Um, and of course, a nice opportunity to spotlight that beautiful auditorium, not too far from here. Human Rights Academy, uh, just to bring uh, attention to this at Nauset Regional High School, after a little bit of a pause, as I've come to understand, it is going to be up and running. Um, at the high school, this is a student, um, student, um, extracurricular activity, and thank you to Anna Smith. Her educator at the middle school who's taking on, stepping up to take on the advisor role for that. And last, as part of my ongoing, uh, you know. Uh, integration into the Nauset School community, I'm also looking to meet with other elected officials throughout um, the area. I had the good fortune to meet with a, a graduate of Nauset High School, a little over a week ago, Senator Julian Sears. And I'm hoping to also have the chance to remove the state representative Natalie Butler. Say that. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, thank you for your report. I have a question. Uh, there's been quite a bit of information lately regarding students that are being homeschooled. Uh, do we know how many students are being homeschooled in the Nauset Regional School District?
Uh, thanks for the question. I don't have the exact number, but it is something that we will be reporting out. Uh, with our November, um, the plan in November is to share enrollment numbers across the district, both homeschool. Uh, charter school and our current enrollment. So that'll be included as part of the reporting out to our school.
I'm sorry, so when will it, when will that report?
November. At the next.
Yeah, at this next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The next agenda item is the NASC uh, resolutions and delegates. So the. Conference is in November. And specifically, the um. Committee is going to vote on Friday, November fourteen, at three fifteen. Um, I am able to make that meeting and represent us if that is, unless somebody else wants. Wants to go, but. Um, that I probably be the one stepping in to do that. So I will be the voter or, or the delegate. Um. And. The resolutions are included in the packet. I believe at the next meeting. We as a committee will vote on these. So um, there's quite a few of them, so. On Glenn's recommendation, we can vote as a whole on them unless there's one or, or two specific ones that you'd want to pull out and specifically talk about. But otherwise, we can. Just vote on all of the resolutions as a whole. And then the next is that budget timeline?
Sure, thank you. Just to bring to your attention the proposed tentative, if you will, uh, budget uh, timelining as we. Um, are really applying the uh, planning for. Uh, maybe twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, or fiscal year, twenty-seven school year. Uh, I, I'm obviously, uh, this is first time through for me trying to work, understand that past approach has been taken, uh, including the calendar. But what I do know to be the case is we have an end goal that has to be by the end of March. To have a, a budget finalized and supported by the school committee to be able to make its way to the town. Uh, for the town meeting and town warrants. Um, so what I, what you see before you here in the packet is a proposal that um. Full disclosure really is modeled after the um, budget and finance subcommittee's uh, calendar for the region. And uh, but my thought is to try and mirror that um. Uh, that pathway or that calendar, generally speaking, as much as, as is possible and can work with the meeting dates. So I tried my best to propose. Uh, what would be announced to three presentations, with the first starting in December and then making uh, our way into the early uh, you know, into the early part of twenty twenty-six. Uh, again, this is a proposed calendar, but we can certainly a- adjust this as you will, but we try. Yet to work with the already planned meeting dates that this committee has. Uh. The superintendent's uh. The superintendents have made slightly different terms, but I include a, a brief description of what I, what I'm trying to suggest for these three different budget proposals on the back of the sheet. The first being the superintendent's preliminary budget presentation, uh, the rec that means, or uh, the recommended budget presentation, um, and then the final budget presentation that so uh, we can, again, we can certainly make adjustments as, as need be, but this is a suggested proposed timeline. Um, the budget planning information will be sent out to uh, all of our school and district leaders tomorrow. Um, and we're out, so it's officially launched, just in here.
And the final agenda item is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five um budget versus actual. Lindsay, it was a, it was a physical handout here, so I will um, I will save a copy to get to you.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's any Dwayne's not here to think.
No, but I, I can just, on their behalf, both Bob Dutch or uh, and, and Dwayne Stew, is what you see here, uh, is before you uh, is the, the end of year balances for fiscal year twenty-five, as the finance department, um, public schools uh, sees them working hand in hand with the town to try and reconcile these. Uh, these are the different budget categories, and also a lot of information uh, here, but you can see the comparisons for what the school committee budget approved amount was fiscal year twenty-five as compared to the expended year-to-date Y T D. Uh, any encumbered funds, if at this point in time, anything uncovered should be, should have been taken care of. Um, the transfer category, just to explain that briefly, or the column, I'm sorry, that represents any uh, internal efforts, if there was a, if there was a slight deficit in the budget line, if it went over budget. Uh, we, we, you know, every intention to try and make sure that any budget plan does not land in the red, and so adjustments is appropriate. Uh, we're, we're ready to adjust that, so um, if there are any questions, I do my best to respond to those, and, and if there are further questions, either tonight or later date, to share those about finance team as well, to be able to put that to you, um, on fiscal year twenty-five.
And just for Lindsay's benefit, that the net is showing that it was a surplus of eighteen thousand four eighty-three. Uh, the next item is reports and information, uh, which is really reporting back on the committees. The only one I attended was the parents committee. Which I know Lindsay was at too, you know, there, so it, it was just kicking off the year and talking about Halloween dance, so which will all get more
Nothing about the kids.
More details on, um, I'm also trying to work with the head of the parents group to get information out to the parents of when we're having the school committee meetings, so so specifically for this one, I'm uh, hoping that the parents group can send out an email showing them you know, uh, where the recording is on YouTube, so that parents can see the safety update and the chief speaking, so that they're aware that these conversations are happening. And, you, you know, even if they didn't make it to the meeting, that they can listen to it. But yeah, I don't think any of our committees met. And Devin is on the transportation one, so.
There, there was a policy subcommittee meeting, um, and I, I was out of town, but I watched the video afterwards, I believe, um somebody here wa- was there, uh.
I was, I was
Yes, you were there, okay, so I, my, you could probably, uh, you know, give a stronger sense. My takeaway from that was there was just a lot of confusion about, uh you know, what was being implemented, what was on the site versus what was in the packet, and there, there wasn't any deci- there weren't any decisions made, it was just about kind of figuring out the process of editing and making sure that what's on the website is most up to date. You, you probably have more to say about that.
No, no, that's fairly accurate. Uh, the good news though, um, you, you know, there's a, if we've ever looked, well, it, there's a lot of policies uh, for all schools, at least, uh, and certainly we're no exception. The good news is there's been a lot of work for the bulk of the policies recent, in recent years, for the uh, members of the policy subcommittee to review those, which is great. Uh, there are four sections remaining, the last four sections, uh forget exactly which ones are their titles, but um, there's been some work since that last meeting to make sure that uh, those final sections have been reviewed, uh, final changes are being made, and then those will be reckon, those will be brought back to the policy subcommittee, uh, for final review. So the end is near, which is great, as a school committee, recommendation is to have some regularity to review those policies. Um, it's a big job for, for a set of volunteers to do, it's so, there's so much there, but the good news is that we'll be in a good place, and I think um, uh, the next meeting should all, uh, take care of that, so, uh, we're close, so, thanks.
Future agenda items, are there any requests for any future agenda items? Okay. Um, approval of the minutes. Um, Amanda, I don't know if I was, maybe I wasn't close enough to the mic on last month's minutes, but my comments are that the Union Fifty-four voting members are me, Devin, and Deborah. It's because we need, we have, we get three Union Fifty-four voting members, and then the, the alternate is Lindsay and Monica. So that it was when I made a comment last time for the approval of the minutes, that just it, it says the Union Fifty-four alternate voting members are Ms. Raymond and Ms. Palmer.
Yes, I'll make that change to the previous minutes, thank you. I, it was a tough one to hear last meeting. Everyone's been great this time, thank you very much.
Good, thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September sixteen?
Motion to approve.
I have, uh, I was not pressing.
Oh, okay. Um, so can I wait till next time then?
Probably should.
Okay. We will put the minutes on next meeting's agenda. Um, and just to point out, uh, the next meeting will be on Monday, November tenth, not at our usual Tuesday, uh, because that, because that Tuesday was a Veterans Day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I believe it worked for, for most everyone, I think Deborah just has to be remote or something, but so we'll, we'll meet next Monday, uh, November, okay. And with that, I, I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
All right, thank you.